Hey, so good morning, everybody. It's 8:30, Monday, June 11th. We recall our regular meeting to order. I hope everybody had a good weekend. We've been getting lots of mixture of rain and sun to keep things green. So we're going to go to new council business to start things off. You have, I think, here, two-one, which is a memo from councillor Malkinson, councillor procedural by law amendment. Let's come forward again.
Good morning. Your worship, I'm not really sure exactly what is going on here. I'm in the understanding that the fate of my procedure by law review is tied to the fate of councillor Parslow's policy amendment. So I think it's whenever he moves to have this done is when we'll do my recommendations. Is that right?
Well, actually, the motion from council was to move it to the meeting. ... the policy review. So we actually didn't tie it to that. So I do understand where you're going, so that's why it's at this meeting here, because there's been no set direction from council yet saying that this would even be considered with the policy review unless a motion came forth to that. But it's, you're right, we haven't even discussed the direction yet of the other.
Your worship, I'm, oh, sorry.
Councillor McFadden, you want to?
Well, I think councillor Malkinson's points are well taken, so I'd like to sort of delay this somehow, but I don't want to lose it, and I don't want it just to fall off the books and never be seen again. I think this, he's got a point to do with that.
So councillor Schuman, then I'll go back to...
I'm wondering if this conversation could come up in a committee of the whole, where we could sort of talk about each one of the points, if, and then, you know, bring it back at a later date and then actually vote on it? If that might be something you would be interested in?
Your worship, I'm more than happy with that. I think that if we had it in the committee of the whole, maybe the next meeting, that we could discuss any of these, well, any of my recommendations and any recommendations that other councillors might have as well.
Yeah, because to councillor Schuman's point, I mean, that discussion can happen in a committee hall, and then if there's any direction, we'd have to come back to the next council meeting, so. Councillor Parslow?
With following suggestion, would it be acceptable to move this to the committee of the whole meeting, June 25th?
That's our next one, yes. So is that a motion, then? Okay, so seconded by councillor Malkinson? Okay. Any discussion on that further? No? So all those in favor, then? Anyone opposed? And it's carried, then? So that's when we will break it down, then. So next, we have is two-two, which is a memo from councillor Parslow. This has come forward again for the policy review. Councillor Parslow?
Okay, the, I discussed this with our CMO, and I think I'd like to bring this forward. I was considering waiting it a little while, but I believe that we have the resources in place to view our policy review after my meeting, June 25th. So the recommendation is before, I believe, that the policy 325, amended to be during the first year of each council's term. The complete policy manual is to be reaffirmed by council. Further, the strategic priority chart be amended by replacing public engagement training with review of city policy manual. So that's my motion.
Okay, is seconded by anybody? Okay, councillor Malkinson seconded, councillor Schuman?
Yes, I'm going to speak against this. I like the current policy that states that we do our policy review in the second year. I think that gives everybody recently elected the opportunity to get a feel for council and what our policies are all about. And quite frankly, in strategic planning, or in our strategic planning sessions, we did identify public engagement training as one of our strategic priorities. The policy review was in there and did not make the cut, and so I would like to stay with the original plan and stay with our public engagement training. I feel that's very important, and that's why it made the cut and the policy review didn't. Thanks.
Okay. Jim, just remind me, and then for council here, presently, the policy says it'll be done in year two. So that means that automatically, next year, this will be identified through the staff as a strategic priority. So it's not that this, we have to make a motion different, this will automatically be done next year if it's not changed today?
Yeah, through your worship, this would be one of Brenda's strategic department priorities for next year under the existing policy. The existing policy speaks to the status quo. It's not responsive if there had been a complete changeover on council. I think you would, since policy is how council directs staff, I believe if there had been a complete changeover on council, you would probably be moving this up. The policy does speak to an extra year of status quo. I believe one of the points that councillor Parslow made originally about this is many of the assumptions that underline your budget are based on policy. So effectively, not reviewing the policy this year means that you will have two budgets. The first one, when you were newly elected, you had very little time to change a budget that was already three-quarters done, and then the following budget will be based on the same assumption. So to the extent that you're uncomfortable with the assumptions on which that budget was made, you might want to move the timing up to this year. That's really, I think, what councillor Parslow was saying.
Councillor Parslow?
I'd just like to speak to the motion. First of all, I'd like to quote George Cuff, if I may, from page 45 and 46 of his book called Cuff's Guide for Municipal Leaders. "Every council inherits the policies of the previous councils. That one statement should cause all new councils to ask the administration for a complete review of current policies to see whether or not they are consistent with the thinking of the new council. It is incumbent on a new council to ensure that it has the opportunity to assess all present policies, that single council's approval or endorsement of a certain stance, and then to take the steps necessary to amend those policies that are no longer consistent or applicable." The public engagement training is a very important aspect, I agree, but it so happens that so many of the council's policies reflect that need for public consultation. And one of my concerns about policy is that I think the way that the current policies have been interpreted need to be talked about because I think they are somewhat lacking. So I think we need to update our policies about public engagement, as one example, so that we are living more closely our guiding principles and our vision. To me, there are some major gaps. I'm not comfortable in dealing with a second budget without there being a complete review of policies because I'm not sure that we all interpret the policies the same way, or that we're all comfortable with current policies. So I think we should heed George Cuff's advice and deal with our policy review before we engage in a second year of budget development.
Thanks. Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Malkinson?
What date did councillor Parslow want to have this done?
I'm not sure what the plan even is. He's just suggesting that we do it this year.
All right. He said that we have the time to accommodate it. I thought he had some time in mind, but yeah.
I believe his reference was to, after discussions with staff, that they feel they could accommodate the assistance with us this year instead of waiting till next year. Jim, is that still the case?
That's correct, yes, your worship. We would expect this would take you several meetings, probably afternoon meetings, two or three of them, which you would review and you'd issue direction, and then at regular meetings, you would get amended policies for adoption. So, you know, it might take a couple of months to work through this.
Okay, any other discussion from council? Councillor Gilbert?
I understand where councillor Parslow's coming from, and I just see the public engagement training as important, but I also see that being a part of our policies. And so, coming on board as a new councillor, you're rolling into what's been done and you're bringing on new stuff, so I think it's important to know, to have a good handle on what these policies are, and doing it in a second year maybe is not in our best interest. And every council, whether you've been re-elected or newly elected, is a new council, so, you know, as a group, are we on the same board, I guess?
Which is why the motion is to amend the policy to do this, because it's always worked doing it in year two before, but if this council would like to change that to year one, that's your prerogative. So we'll call the question, then? So all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Did you catch that? Yeah, but it's carried. So going forward, then, Jim, we'll just have to set a timeline.
Yes, your worship, at your next meeting, the amended policy will come forward for your adoption, along with a proposed schedule of meetings.
Yeah, because we have to actually adopt that now, now that we've made the motion to change it, so. Councillor, yes?
Just, maybe out of order, if so, preferably.
It's okay.
But we've also heard from administration that there are some gaps, that there's some need for some new policies, so I imagine that will be all part of the work. Is that correct?
Through your worship, we certainly have been bookmarking a few things that we'll bring forward.
That would be the times, a good point. So new council business, that's all that was brought forward, but is there anything else that anybody would like to mention? Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we traveled off to FCM, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and it was a very enjoyable excursion, met lots of people from across Canada, and, you know, it was very, very interesting to hear that our problems are the problems straight across Canada, and sometimes we're doing pretty good when we listen to the other communities talk about their issues. Last week, I was also able to go out with David George, he's with Green Energy Features, and show him around town, and that was really fun to be able to, you know, show him all the great things we're doing with regards to renewable energy and the solar, and I took him up to the wind park, and so that was really, really a good time also.
Maybe explain why he was here?
Well, I think he's making a little video series that he, and he's going to be highlighting Dawson Creek, I believe. He interviewed you, and...
He's been hired by CBC to do a documentary, one-hour documentary, and it's mostly going to be highlighting Dawson Creek, so.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome. So I had a good time entertaining him. We drove off to Fort St. John last week for the BC Hydro Integrated Resource Plan, the stakeholder meeting, and we found that to be quite interesting. Some of us found that to be quite interesting. And if anybody wants to comment on that resource plan, you can go to the BC Hydro website and submit your comments there. And that's all. Thanks.
Thanks. Councillor Parslow?
I've attended a number of meetings, and the meeting at the South Peace Arts Society, there was a planning meeting concerning the Edna McPhail, what has been called the Edna McPhail Visual Arts Centre, and it was kind of exciting, all the concepts about filling some void there through that facility. So council should be hearing about that, I would imagine, in more detail, early fall. The Mile Zero Park Board has had a number of meetings, and tomorrow will be, I expect that they will be ratifying their vision and their action plans to bring that vision into fruition for this, for year one, which is the current year we're in. I was really pleased with the meetings, from the way, from the tone and the willingness for people to share openly and honestly, and I am quite encouraged by all that. The, what was the other matter? Oh, yes, and the, as you may know, some of you, the Rotary Lake Preservation Society has been very active, and they're getting an awful lot of business support for their first function, which is for Saturday, June 23rd, beginning, I believe, at 11:00 a.m. and going on into the afternoon. So encourage members of council to attend. It's a fun, family activity, and they're getting an awful lot of support, and there's a lot of work being put into it, so encourage you to attend that. Thank you.
Will it be done at the late?
Yes.
In the afternoon?
There will be posters, but I'm going to hang my hat on and say it's going to begin at 11 o'clock and finish around 3:00.
Councillor McFadden?
Good morning, your worship. I had the occasion to attend the, I think it was the 69th Annual Review of the Air Cadets on Saturday.
Yes, thank you.
And as always, just a great turnout, the, it's just great to see the young cadets grow and mature year after year, and it was, I really enjoyed that. Just one other thing, I had an interesting phone call from a resident of Parkside Villas, which is across from the hospital there, and the concern was the speed limit along in front of that building. Now, it's 30 kilometers on 110th Avenue, and it's 30 kilometers past Peace Park and Central, and then it clicks over to 50 for about two blocks, and on the left side of that street is a park, and the seniors' park, and the walking trail, and the right side is a seniors' residence. So he raised some very good points, and in any event, he's, there's a letter en route to the mayor and council outlining his concerns, and be dealt with probably at the next meeting, so, thank you.
Thanks for the heads up. Anyone else? Councillor Malkinson?
I just wanted to report to council on how educational and valuable, I think, the experience that I had at FCM was. It was unbelievable. It was great to see how other councillors from all across Canada viewed their role in their communities, you know, how they all saw their job. I found all the educational tours very, very amazing. I also attended the, well, I suppose that's, I attended the Relay for Life and, you know, the school play that was held over the weekend at the high school. Congratulations, I think, to all the people in the musical. It was very, very well put on, well organized. And nothing to report for the Watersheds, the or the Library Board? Good.
Thanks. Yeah, I needed to bring a box of Kleenex almost, because I was laughing so hard, tears were coming down my face. I watched it three times.
Greg's son.
Greg's son.
Well, I was going to bring Greg, I was going to bring Greg a package today, just to, but... Councillor McFadden, you want?
Just one thing, your worship, to councillor Parslow, the goals and objectives and the visioning for the Mile Zero, was that public information?
It's, will be. It's, it's been presented in its final format tomorrow, at tomorrow's evening's meeting, so it has to be approved by the board. And then I will make sure that council sees it.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. That would be an interesting document.
Excellent, and thank you for speaking to the microphones, because I know the cameras and everything pick it up a lot better when you do that. So let's move on, then, to minutes. We have three sets of minutes from May 28th, under three-one-four adoption. Councillor Kenny, councillor Schuman, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Under business arising, we have four-one, which is a memo that came forward again. Looking probably to councillor Schuman?
Yes, I would like to reaffirm my wish to pass a resolution. I wrote it out, they had one that they wanted us, or suggested we use, and I thought that we could use. Whereas we value and welcome young children and their families in our community, and our community's economic and social sustainability depends on families having access to quality affordable early care and learning. Be it resolved that the, now, I'm not sure if we say the City of Dawson Creek, or the Dawson Creek City Council endorse the visions and goals of the community plan for public system of integrated early care and learning. That's my wish.
Okay, and seconded by councillor Kenny, okay. And discussion. Go around the room here on this one, I'm sure. Councillor Parslow?
Well, I support this, but I'm just wondering, what is the language? Is it the City of Dawson Creek, or whatever?
City Council, or...
That's a good question, Jim. What would be the, it would probably be the City of Dawson Creek.
You're, you'd be endorsing it corporately, so, City of Dawson Creek is probably...
I noticed on the forms that it's, you know, the City of Vancouver, City of North Vancouver, City of Williams Lake, those things, so.
Okay, councillor Parslow, continue?
So, fine, that's the, it is, it is very sad to read, you know, how, in a lot of documents, how the neglect that we have on this area, and the fact that Canada is the, I think that it has been for a number of years, and I could stand to be corrected, the lowest level of support in the OECD. Usually, you read it's the United States is the lowest support for things like this, so we need to pay attention to this. It's vitally important for the well-being of the country that we improve our quality of support for young children.
Okay, good one. Is there anyone else? Councillor Malkinson?
I don't, I'll just apologize beforehand. I don't want to appear like a Grinch here, but I think I'm going to be against this. I think we should be trying to build stronger families in B.C., not have the government pay for all the children in B.C. to be taken care of. I don't think that builds strong families, and, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not going to raise the other points. That's the reason that I'm going to be voting against.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, I actually understand exactly where you're going, and it sounds odd, because, I mean, you definitely want to be pursuing any opportunity you can to work with the provincial government or ask them to continue supporting children. But reading through that report again, that they're asking us to endorse the report that says that people won't pay more than $10 for childcare, which means the rest is being picked up by the taxpayers, that they suggest that all childcare workers make at least $25 an hour, and they're asking us to support that. So the first thing that comes to mind, so if we have another union, teachers, or somebody else comes in front of us saying, "We work for the provincial government, we want to raise," are you going to endorse that? Would we? What we're basically saying, if we push this forward and endorse their plan, is that we're saying that, we're telling the provincial government what we feel, how that should work, and it's a provincial issue. And so I kind of struggle with it, because it's exactly what we want to see happen, but is it our role to be telling the provincial government how much somebody else should be making? Councillor Gilbert?
And along that lines, using local daycare, those families that can't afford the full fees are subsidized by the provincial government, so it's not like the children cannot go, or they're not going to be able to utilize those services, because the government does fund underprivileged children to participate, so I do, I do take issue with the report on the sense of wages and stuff. I don't think that's our place to be telling the government what they need to be paying, but we do need to support our families, for sure, but I don't think it's our place.
If those are those two pages taken out of the report, that's, you know, everything else in the report, I 100% agree with, that we need to start supporting children, we need to be assisting, we need to get more childcare workers. I just struggle with the fact of putting my name on something that's telling the provincial government what somebody else should be getting paid, that we have no jurisdiction over, so. Any other comments? Councillor Parslow, you look at my challenge there on that one?
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to enter into debate about this, but I, one of the reasons I support it is that in all my work in supporting families, they need to have the support of early, good quality early childhood education. So I don't, I really agree with Duncan Malkinson about improving, we need to strengthen family life, but in the reality of our economy, this is one way of doing it.
Yeah, and that's why I mean, it's hard to argue that part, for sure. I mean, definitely. Okay, so, no other comments? So all those in favor, then?
Oh, damn it, sorry.
Let's try that again. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And it's carried.
All those in favor of not doing it.
Anything else under business arising? You're going to have to have a policy that you can't swear in council? I don't know.
Oh, you didn't. Not to swear, I would.
I know, that was excellent. That was excellent. Okay, let's move on to correspondence. We have a few more minutes before delegations.
Maybe it'd be a procedure by law, isn't it?
That's right. Under correspondence, first one is five-one, letter from the Dawson Creek Seals Swim Club, and this is a request for camping at the Kimbor Aquatic Center, June 22nd to 24th, when they have their competition. Councillor Schuman?
I would like to move that we grant this request for the Seals Club. We've done it before, I don't think we've run into any issues with it, and I think it's great that they have this, this at our aquatic center, so.
Okay, seconded by councillor Parslow. We have allowed it in the past, we haven't had any problems at all. The only issue that comes to light for me is when we checked into it, that's grad weekend, and that's the grad ceremonies and party are happening at the same place at the same time. Pardon me?
Think we can manage it, then?
Well, actually, Jim might be able to comment, but we did talk to Global Spectrum, who said that they don't foresee any issues themselves, because the grads will be using the upper area. I'm just wanting to raise that as a flag, so. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the grad activities will all take place in the event center and utilizing the south parking lot. There's no intention that they'll be entering or conducting any activities in the north parking lot. Grad's being grads, there may be some interaction, but the, none of that should be at the time that campers are sleeping. All of the activities will be over at that point.
Sure. Are they holding the dry grad and everything there as well, which goes till about 3:00 in the morning, though? So I think it might just be, if council passes this, like we have in the past, I think it just might be wise, just to re-remind the people who are organizing it that, you know, they might want to just have their ears open.
Or earplugs in.
Or earplugs in, yes. Councillor Malkinson?
I spoke to the, well, Deanna Thomas yesterday, I think, and she said that if there was any problems with the grad event, that they'd actually be asked, that they might be able to ask Connie Patterson for permission to camp near the, you know, where they regularly camp during fall fair.
Which would be Lakota Center.
A little bit further away.
Right?
No, I mean that little camping area right near the grandstands there, a little bit further away, out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to raise that as a flag, just so people knew, anyway. Everyone's going to have fun that weekend. So all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's carried. Five-two is a letter from Tanny Keeler, and this is a letter of support for the B.C. Bantam Tier Three Provincial Hockey Championships next March that they wish to hold here. Councillor Parslow?
I'd like to move the letter of support be given to the Dawson Creek Minor Hockey Association in support of the Tier Three Provincial Hockey Championships, March 2013.
Seconded by councillor Kenny. Any comments? No, just good to see more activity here, right? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. It's about 1 minute to 9:00. Let's take a recess, top up our coffees, and then we're going to be going into delegations. So we're going to call the meeting back to order. We are moving up to delegations. First delegation we have is six-one, we have Mr. Bob Hogan in attendance. I have a proclamation I'm going to read out, but then we're going to be inviting Bob to come forward as part of an announcement that we're making. So I'll just read out the proclamation first. So whereas throughout history, people worldwide have celebrated the summer solstice and recognized the power and energy of the sun, and its importance to all life on the planet, and whereas on June 23rd, the City of Dawson Creek will be announced as the first official solar city in Canada by the Canadian Solar Cities Project, a newly formed Canadian not-for-profit corporation dedicated to promoting solar technologies and sustainable communities throughout Canada, so now therefore I do hereby proclaim June 23rd as Solar Day in Dawson Creek, and we encourage all residents in and around the surrounding community to celebrate the benefits of solar energy here in Dawson. So thank you very much. Bob, come forward. I'm just going to close that.
Yeah, well, thank you, your worship. So, my name is Bob Hogan, I'm with the Northern Lakes College Clean Energy Division, and we have been delivering the Solar Days project, celebrating Solar Day in Dawson Creek for the last several years, and we've always done it in conjunction with the City of Dawson Creek, Northern Lakes College, and our corporate sponsors, who have been in the past, Defstan Industries, and AB Horstmann, and some. And this year, Solar Day, of course, is on the 23rd of June, down at the Energy Hills in Northern Lakes College, and we are having a new sponsor distrib, which is the Canadian Solar Cities Project, which we're really excited about, but also proclaiming the City of Dawson Creek as the Canada's first official solar city, so, credit center for that. So we want to have tours, some educational activities, and just some basic activities for kids and people to enjoy, so we invite you all to come down to the Energy Hills on the 23rd, and enjoy the day.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and actually, I'd like you to come forward, because I think this is something that, with the proclamation here, we should be getting at least a...
Where do I come forward?
Just right up here, we should at least get a photo up here. Because this, to us, is the city, I think this is something, we're very happy with it.
Two things in one day?
Yeah.
The other, yeah. It's really like the opening.
But then I also wanted to talk about the floor, if there's any questions for council. Do you guys have any questions on that? Aside from the fact that, you know, we always brag about Dawson Creek here, the Energy House, I mean, that's those colleges use that. Something that we're very proud of, we want to start off with, and everybody, they're working out that, I mean, we wish, the partnerships for them, you know, when we talk about the city of Dawson Creek having more sunlight than happens. Unfortunately, mine's 20 sometimes, and we have that sunlight. The temperature doesn't really affect the sun. So actually, in the wintertime, when the sun is shining and there's snow on the ground, we actually did a game from other places.
Bob, can you tell us, can you tell us a little more about the Solar Cities project?
Okay, basically, what we've done, we have registered a Canadian nonprofit corporation called the Canadian Solar Cities Project. It's on, our board of directors is made up of local people, as well as one of the cities, all dedicated to the promotion of solar and sustainable cities. So we just launched that this spring. Really excited about it. We have mandated to deliver our message to cities all across Canada, and so we'll be doing that starting probably in July. We're pretty excited about that. Dawson Creek, of course, will be the first solar city, because Dawson Creek's going to lead it in the country, in regards to solar energy and the promotion of sustainability. And we're really excited, Manny's going to Dawson Creek, he's on our board of directors, and he'll be here on the 23rd to present.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations to you, too, because I know you've been working hard on this personally as well.
Absolutely. It's been a five-year project, and Chris, like he has been for the city and for the college. It's exciting.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I'm just, sorry, sorry. I'm just curious about what's going on. When, when does it start at the Energy?
It'll be starting about 10:00 in the morning.
10:00?
Yeah, 4:00 in the afternoon.
So 4:00, perfect, thank you.
That's okay, you can leave it off now, Tara. So next we have, I'm just going to pull down the screen, we have a delegation from the Dawson Creek Competition Pow Wow is going to be here. Thank you, you're taller than I, so you can pull that down. And I'll invite you forward to come to the delegation, because I really appreciate the fact you came in today, just to give us a bit of a presentation and some background of what will be happening here in Dawson Creek.
I'd like to play the video, and I can perform it as a video client.
So before we begin the video, I'd like to thank the worship and the council for giving us this time and this opportunity to do a presentation. This is so important to us, we've put a lot of work into this and still, and a lot of our community have committed to it. So, Gary will walk you through the video.
My name is Gary Goldwood, by the way. I've been on Dawson Creek Pow Wow. Yes. The Pow Wow, like, it's hard to explain exactly what you're in for, that's why we brought the video. You know, I can tell you, you've got dancers. It includes kids from as young as two to adults as old as 91, the last pop. I was actually at one this weekend, the oldest competitor, I think, was 91. We've got people coming from the United States, as far as south as New Mexico, we've had people come from Australia, actually, to this state. It's quite, it's a, it's a different, it's probably a part you've never seen of our culture. It's drug and alcohol free. Every Pow Wow starts with this, it's called Grand Entry. We have to bring in all our flags, the B.C. flag, whatever flags we can get, whoever has a flag, we ask them if they want to participate, come bring your flag. It's basically honoring our flags. So everybody carries one. We have, this is where we ask council to come in, and actually ask members to come in and dance with us. This is about honoring anybody who's there. We ask for veterans, we ask for council members, we ask for RCMP to come. And this is basically our way of honoring the people in the town of Dawson, everybody that I think deserves the respect. So these are our traditional dancers. There's four men's groups. They all compete against each other, they all have their own style, their own way of dancing. It's a drug and alcohol free event. We invite everybody to come. Anybody who wants to learn how to dance, we have dance class in Dawson, that's free. Anybody's kids that want to dance, anybody who wants to learn or understand. As you can see, these guys don't have a bustle. The bustle is the feathers on the back, this next group, these are called grass dancers. And they are actually, their dance is designed to flatten the grass of the field, because all Pow Wows take place on the ground. They're actually supposed to be dancing, the idea is they're flattening the grass for the rest of the dancers, so they don't trip or fall. So, traditional dancers, we never use the term warriors, we use the term providers and protectors, because part of our teaching is, we don't believe in war, but, so, but we believe in protecting and providing. So, traditional teaching is, is that way, we don't say, here's our warriors, we say, here's our protectors, our providers. It's designed to protect and provide for your family, whenever you need to, and if that case, it's, you know, fighting or whatever, but that's what it is. Our elders, actually, that I explained to you, are Frank Daniels and Elizabeth Boje, they're from Smith, B.C., or Alberta. They have spent 10 years, I think, in Edmonton Max, teaching sweat lodges, which are the traditional healing. They, I know they spent time in the prison in Vancouver, which they were asked to stay, but they didn't want to stay, because they had commitments to the Pow Wow and stuff. They actually run a boys' ranch in Edmonton right now, which deals with abused and battered kids, 12 and under. And so they do a traditional lodge to healing center, is basically what they call. They spent 15 years in Commingring Lodge, which is an alcohol and drug and treatment center, doing traditional healing. They were asked to sit on Aboriginal Education or National Elders Council to provide guidelines on what an actual elder is. Because a lot of our teachings, people will bring elderly natives, which is different from what a native elder is to me. Like, a lot of people will not understand that being a native elder is something that you earn. There's a lot of stuff you have to do to actually earn that, right? It's not something, you just grab somebody off the street that's elderly. It's, you know, I could go on and on, but I don't want to get too carried away, because I'm your old dad, and I don't want to hold your time on that. But we bring, they were the ones that approached us, the elders. They come to me, I met them through the Taylor Pow Wow, and said, "You've got to start the Pow Wow in Dawson." It was not something I wanted to get into, because I know the work and the time. And my position, I knew them from before, because I helped them with their ceremonies. I'm called a nuscapio, which is basically, in my language, means helper. Whatever they want, I got to do, and that's my way of earning my way into being an elder. I don't ask questions. If they need something, my job is to make sure I find a way to get it done. So they approached me and my wife, said, "You've got to start one in Dawson," after the Taylor went in, you know, I couldn't say no. You know, I have that choice to say no. Everything's a choice, is the way we teach it. You can say yes, you can say no, but as respect-wise, I never say no to what they do, because I know they earn that respect in the things they do, especially with all their, they teach healthy, everything's, the first thing I guess I can explain, this is the fancy show, this is the ladies' dance, there's, I don't know how many dances, three categories. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, because I'm a public speaker, I'm usually in the background.
Well, you're doing great. We went to the.
You're doing well.
So, it's drug and alcohol free. We made a competition to draw the dancers, we are up north, we've been trying to raise as much funds as we can, it does cost a lot of money, we invite everybody to come, we want to keep it free, no admission, so anybody could come and see what's going on. They'll dance from noon, and Pow Wows will go up to 4:00 in the morning. And like I said, it's clean, it's drug and alcohol free, you've got all ages dancing, all group, you know, we don't, there's no specific who can dance, who can't dance, everybody's welcome at any time. And especially, it's about honoring and about, the outfits are designed to be colorful, because the whole teaching is, you're not dressing up just the outside, you're dressing up your inside. So that is supposed to be basically dressing up your inner you, the part of you that, you know, you could be smiling on the outside, hurting on the inside, you could be smiling on the inside, hurting on the outside. That inside you is what you're dressed up, and who you're dancing for spiritually is yourself. You're making yourself happy, you're healing each other. One of the big teachings is, all the drumming that people are on, that's a healing drum. So, when they dance, they're healing themselves as well as the crowd. So we ask people that are sick to actually come out to the Pow Wow, sit close to a drum, that drum will help you feel better, and help you, you know, whatever you need.
Excellent. Well, thanks for all that background, that's excellent. So when, what were the dates again?
July 6th, 7th, and 8th.
So when you're, I mean, you're looking, obviously, for some sponsorship helping out from the city. So when you talk about it being an expensive event, what are some of the issues that cost to mount?
Paying the, the dancers is the big cost. And the reason why we went to competition is, it's hard for people to travel this far up north to come to our town. For us, for me, it was important to do it this way, to bring, you know, people that do this, we're living, will travel basically all year round, that's all they do with dance. It's those kind of people that I want to bring. It's good for the kids, it's good for, for me, for the town to see, like, just how beautiful it is. To me, I don't want to, I think Dawson deserves to have the best. I mean, it's, the way I look at it, why aim low? Aim high, and get everybody coming. The money that we put into it is not even compared to Pow Wows that I go to, we're aiming semi-middle-low, just because of the, how much money it does cost to put on this event. That's why we asked for the, we are asking if you guys would let us have the arena, the memorial arena, wait the fee for us, if that's possible, the Lakota field for our campers, because people are traveling long distances, like, last year, we had one, or two families come from New Mexico, participating in our Pow Wow, our first annual Pow Wow, and that was our first one. We, you know, we're still trying to get things rolling, like, with advertising and stuff, so that was just basically by word of mouth. We did get out posters, but only 25 days before the event, and so we had people from New Mexico make it down to our, way out to Arizona. So, and you know, a lot of that's drawn in by our elders, because they are respected basically everywhere. So, when they say they're putting on this Pow Wow, basically, people will come, just because of them alone.
Is there any more questions from the council? Counselor Malkinson?
Hi, I'm wondering if you have a rough idea, how many from Dawson come to this event? Any, any idea on, like, the numbers that head to this event?
We, we were trying to do a calculation on our actual numbers per day. I know our dance total, dancers alone were 150 per day, and that didn't include our Dawson Creek dancers, because part of Pow Wow thing is, you do not compete in your own home, you dance in your own home, but you do not compete against your guests. So, we had filled the arena, and I can't remember the weather, what it was.
I think, I think we had something at 1500 over the three.
Three days.
And there was, and the weather was terrible.
The arena really helped, so.
That's right, in the middle of the world.
Yeah, they had to move all of their chairs out.
Counselor Schuman has a question.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, it's lovely. I really enjoyed the beautiful regalia, and I wish I was here again this year, but it seems every year I'm out of town, and I regret that. Anyways, my question is, so, I guess I was confused, so you guys invite dancers to come, and then you pay them to come, like?
We don't actually invite them, we put the posters up, there's Pow Wows going all year, so we'll make a poster, we send those Pow Wows out via email, well, you know, we're not just traditional, well, you know, a little bit, you know.
It's not set out by drama or anything?
It's not just, it's not just a smoke signal from downtown, a tow fire. But we do send the posters out, and that's basically the invitation. It's their choice whether they're going to come, we don't actually say, "Will you come?" The only people we actually invite to our Pow Wow is one drum, and we call that host drum, because there are ceremonial songs, like the Grand Entry song, every Pow Wow from Dawson Creek to southern United States, it's the same song, it's called the Honor Song. So it honors everybody. That song is played at every Pow Wow, at every start of their Pow Wow.
There's a Pow Wow network, and people that travel, they travel the Pow Wow trail, they check where all the Pow Wows are, and then they pick which ones they go to, and the ones that have the money, they like to go to the competition. Check everything.
So is there, so it's a free event, so are you able to earn any revenues from any part of, like, there's no, no fee to?
Revenue stream.
Yeah, yeah, but there's no fee to enter, like, usually if you're entering a competition, you pay a fee to enter the competition, so you don't recover any revenues that way. So where, you're just raising your money then, from sponsorship, the entire thing?
Most of it, some of it is, we do, we have vendors come in, so food vendors, we charge them to come in, and they serve, you know, I was hoping council would come down, have an Indian taco, it's called, you know, Really Love It, it's the big head end where, we've got vendors that come in, we charge them for spaces to sell their food. We have, we also have, selling items, basically.
So crafts and?
Yeah.
Crafts.
Arts and crafts.
Locklocks, whatever, necklaces, dance regalia, drums, so they'll sell a lot of things. The only thing we don't ever sell is eagle feathers, and that's, that's only allowed to get, traditional, you know, I don't want to say everybody follows the same road that we do, but we try and are teaching our kids a strict way of teaching, because we do, I also participate in the dance class, and all my clients volunteer. I do the dance class, I do the Pow Wow, and almost all of us do that, and we're all working at the same time, so. And it's for the kids of Dawson, it's for the town of Dawson to see a different part of our culture than it is drug and alcohol free. Not a lot of people will see it, because unless you're a part of it, you don't even realize it's going on all the time.
Counselor Wilber?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, so the fees for the dancers, is that a fee that you give them for participating, or is it more of a dance competition and?
We have part, part prizes for second round.
So it's more of a dance competition?
They have MP in each age group, so we separate them by age group, so you'll have men's golden age, like, we won't have somebody 73 competing against 18 or, you know.
It's not fair. Sure, some of the elder guys will win, but.
Not fair to the 18 year olds.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that it is actually competition, so that's what the prize money is for, is they're actually competing, they're not just being paid to come.
And the reason we did that is because we are so far up north, and it does help draw those, draw the better dancers here. I mean, we don't offer a lot, you know, somebody traveling from the United States, we pay them $700 to come up here and win first place. You pull a trailer from New Mexico to Dawson and back, I'm pretty sure it's going to be a little more than $700.
Is the Pow Wow at Taylor still happening?
Yes.
It still goes on?
There's tradition.
Oh, there's, oh, it's not competition?
When it's traditional, their costs are a little bit lower than ours, it's just, they pay their dancers daily, everyone, and it's a small monetary amount, but they usually throw less, because, you know, if somebody has a hard time traveling Taylor, which is even further north than us, and they'll, they'll pay their dancers, like, kids will get like $5 a day, the elders will get like $50 a day, so it's 150 over three days, but they're responsible for providing food every day for them, looking after, make sure, going around, firewood, water, everything. That's competition, we, it's a way of excusing yourself out of all that extra work, without being disrespectful. So, we put out posters, what kind of Pow Wow we're holding, so then people will realize they're responsible for themselves when they come.
Any more questions?
Just, I'm glad that Dawson Creek has had one Pow Wow, and hope you have many more. I go to the Taylor Pow Wow, thoroughly enjoy it, for my, got some invites from some friends, and I make it a habit of going whenever it's held. I just have questions of administration to, I'm not sure, what is the framework?
So we put out posters, what kind of powwow we're holding. So then people will realize they're responsible for themselves when they come.
Any more questions?
Just, uh, I'm glad that Dawson Creek has had one powwow and hope you have many more. The, I go to the Taylor powwow and thoroughly enjoy it. Um, for my, got some invites from some friends and I, I make it a habit of going whenever it's held. Um, I just have questions of administration to, I'm not sure. What is the framework for council's decisions about these requests?
Will I have to come forward on the mayor's?
Okay. Oh, yes, that's thank you. That's silly of me. Yeah. Well, anyway, I'm just delighted that you, you have this, that this is the second one and I wish you have many more.
I'd like to make, uh, um, I'm a father of ten children. Uh, there's eight of us kids. And, uh, since we started going to the local preschool, it was actually Chetwind coming here. I think it's helped us immensely as a family. And, uh, since we've been there, we went from a small group. We have like sixty, seventy kids over.
From, in Chetwind?
Just here in Dawson Creek.
Six years, seventy kids are coming out to dance?
Yeah.
Where do you, where do you guys do this at?
Longley School, it has allowed us every year to use their gym in the evening. So myself and a bunch of us now volunteer. So most of the committee is now coming out to the dance group to help with the dance group. It is about the kids, so we, and for the, for the gym that they allow us to use every week, we actually go out average all day and we, we dance with them.
Then what do you dance? Before I go out? I'll just go to the front first.
Part of our teaching too is our kids are not allowed to be paid to do performances. And it's just the way, unless they're going to a powwow to compete, that's the only way they're allowed to compete. They cannot, we cannot send them out to be paid to perform. If they're going to perform, the performance has to be pro bono. Or it can be an honorarium for the powwow or to the dance group, something like that, but not to the individual dancer.
No more questions?
Actually, not a question. I, um, ten kids, I'm a mother of five, so wow. You've got more patience than I do. Um, I, I actually just want to say thank you for doing this for the community and engaging these children and preserving your culture and your spirituality. Um, what a bonus for Dawson Creek. And so I just wanted to put that out there, like volunteering is one thing, but you're going above and beyond. So congratulations and thank you for doing that in our community.
And, and thanks for coming in today because this really shed a lot more light on what's, what's happening. You know, as, as I mentioned before the meeting, it's, it's hard to see off of a one or two page request really what, what's happening, what the impact is. So, uh, again, we wish you the best of luck. It sounds like we'll have lots of people again, I hope. And, uh, as I said, uh, just on a protocol part, uh, later on in the meeting, we'll be discussing it further on what we do or, uh, what's allowed.
Okay.
And thanks so much. Thank you very much for bringing it out.
Made notes upon my notes. Flying them?
No, we didn't make the decision.
No?
No? I didn't make the decision.
No, I think it's great though.
I think it's nice.
Better check out time.
Sixty or seventy?
Oops. Yeah, that's.
Sixty or seventy?
Well, it's just nice to see the positive, you know, it's, you know, positive energy.
So continuing on here, we had a delegation of six, three. It looks like they have not arrived yet. So not sure if, uh, if they're coming later. So we'll just skip over that for now and we'll get back to correspondence. So we were at? Five, three, yes. It's good. So we're at five, three. So this is a letter from the Quanis Childcare Center. And this is asking us to relocate the playground equipment at the old Centennial Pool to the new location at the post office once they move there. Council Schuman. Here, I'll help you out.
Yes, thank you.
Before we get into it, um, I'll get Jim to highlight this, but realistically, uh, their letter says it's not used. Actually, that's not quite true. It is being used by the after school. And it is a condition of our licensing that we require to have a playground there. So if we get rid of our playground, we'll have to shut down the after school there.
Okay. So thank you. I'd like to move this for information.
Seconded by Council Kenny.
I suspected as much.
Did you have a question, Council Malcson?
Yeah, I did. Yeah. Um, we'll send a letter outlining that exact thing that you just said, right?
Yes, we will. We'll let them know because, uh,
And they'll understand that.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. So any other comments then for information? So all those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Five, four is correspondence from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and this is regarding the Queen's Diamond Jubilee Medal Program. Maybe all, before our motion's made here as well, I can give some background because we had this put on here. Typically, uh, when we get requests for, uh, that come forward for council, for us to nominate people, we usually receive them for information because we will usually put it out to the community if somebody wants to be, um, promoted, supported for an award. This one here is separate. This is from the FCM. And this is specific, there's different categories, but there's one level there that's specific to municipalities. So we are the only ones that can actually, uh, council here, the only ones that can nominate somebody. So if we choose not to, then nobody in Dawson Creek will get that award. So it's up to us if we choose to have a process where we want to nominate somebody. So Council Malcson?
The recognition committee that we have is also out as well, isn't it? It's just council letter.
Well, that's a good, actually a good question. I think this is a council one, but Jim?
Uh, through your worship, the recognition committee is to deal with instances in which you are contemplating as a council giving recognition, naming a building, a street, a reservoir, um, putting a plaque on a wall. Uh, its role is to advise you on people you may wish to honor. Uh, it doesn't have a role in nominating people for outside awards, Chamber of Commerce awards, or this kind of thing.
So my, my hope is, you know, we should make a motion here, I think, to, uh, um, actually put this back to council so we can go through a process. Because, uh, I think it's important, you know, there's probably lots of people out there we could consider, but it's something we have to go through a process. So Council Malcson?
So it says that the deadline is, uh, June thirtieth here, doesn't it?
Yes.
August first.
August, sorry, August first.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
So we will, uh, maybe at the next council meeting speak aloud and do the same tally as we did with the Mauzira Park nomination?
Well, this would be, there's, I guess there's a couple of different ways to process, but committee, the whole, we could have a discussion or we could do it other ways. Jim, do you have a suggestion?
Uh, through your worship, probably the best process is any counselor who believes they have a candidate uh, can perhaps, uh, forward to Cindy the name of that candidate and a brief explanation of why the counselor believes that, candidate is a worthy recipient.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll distribute those amongst all of you. And then as Council Malcson says, in the event that you are oversubscribed, uh, you'll have to do some kind of vote amongst yourselves.
Go ahead.
Um, then it won't be, and then what will we refer to this to the, once we have a nomination, what will we refer to the recognition committee or will it just be council's decision?
Well, it'll be council, but what we'd probably want to do is once we had a, uh, it narrowed down, we'd probably want to bring it back to a council meeting for a formal endorsement.
Yes, you would need, council would need to make the choice. But again, this is, uh, you're forwarding a nomination to another body.
Yeah.
So the recognition committee terms of reference don't really.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Flew over my head.
Okay, so, uh, good discussion. Well, we, probably not for information, we'd want to make.
I'd like to move that we participate in this, uh, jubilee award on the municipal awards.
Excellent. Thank you. And seconded by Council Wilbur. And then with that participation, we'll just go with that suggestion that over the next week, if you can think of anybody, uh, email it to Cindy or bring it in and with an explanation why, so then we can discuss it.
And this is separate from, I mean, I just remember Kim Love and others. Won a, a jubilee, so this is different than that. That's where I was confused. I was thinking, we already did that.
Yeah, those ones were, those ones were nominated by individuals in the community. This one here, they're giving an opportunity now for us to be able to nominate someone.
All right.
So there's been a whole bunch of different categories. And even on this one here, if you look at it, uh, there's some that are being nominated by the FCM, some by the PT Association, and then some that are for municipalities.
Question be put?
Yeah, good. Any other, so all those in favor then? Opposed, it's carried?
Just one comment. The, the presumably we, this, uh, we want this to be a surprise. So therefore, decision would be kept secret for a while until?
You know, it's interesting you say that because originally I asked staff, did this qualify to be in the closed agenda? So we could actually do exactly that because we wanted to say if we could nominate somebody, maybe a surprise. So it would be a, an excitement for them. Unfortunately, it doesn't qualify to be in our closed. So it's, uh, one of those interesting things that hopefully they're not going to be watching when we decide.
And the press won't, won't talk about it.
Because at the end of the day, just be, we have to remember, just because we nominate doesn't mean that they'll get selected.
Maybe we could just shut off the cameras for just two minutes while we're doing that.
They are asking you to nominate one plus an alternate.
Yes.
I assume that is because they have their own vetting process they're going to go through?
Good point. Thanks, Jim. Okay, so let's, uh, move along into reports now. We got report seven, one, which is from the Chief Financial Officer and this is a request to borrow funds through the security issuing. It's on here. We are at seven, one. So Council Wilber, thank you. I won't make you read out the whole recommendation, but, uh, you can read out the first part if you'd like.
It's slowly coming up.
Oh, yeah, she's.
Uh, report number twelve dash one, two, six from the Chief Financial Officer regarding request to borrow funds through the security issuing be received. Further, that the city of Dawson Creek intends to borrow from the Municipal Finance Authority of British Columbia, four million over twenty-year period, two million three hundred ninety-seven hundred sixty-three over a ten-year period as part of their two thousand twelve fall issue comprised of the following amounts. Do you want me to give the amount?
That's fine.
Okay. Further, that the officer responsible for the financial administration be authorized to work with the Municipal Finance Authority to lock in interest rates on the loan authorization borrowing bylaws as put forward on the two thousand twelve fall security issuing schedule as presented for the full term of the bylaws at a relending rate most advantageous to the city of Dawson Creek.
Excellent. Seconded by Council Kenny. Uh, any discussion, questions? Fairly straightforward, this one. Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Seven, two is report twelve, one, thirty-two from the Chief Financial Officer and this is for the Strategic Community Investments Funds and Progress Report. Council Malcson?
I move that, uh, this report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the strategic community investment funds planned and progress report be received. And further, that the Strategic Community Investment Funds Progress Report to June thirtieth, twenty twelve be received for information.
Seconded by Council Schuman. Comments? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Seven, three is report twelve, one, twenty-four from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. And this is for the quotes for the two thousand twelve fleet vehicle. Sorry, Council Parson?
I'd like to move that to report number ADM twelve dash one, two, four from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. We request for quotations number twen- uh, twenty twelve dash ten fleet vehicle be received. Further, staff be authorized to lease one, uh, two thousand and twelve four-wheel drive slash four-wheel drive four-door SUV, Highlander Limited Hybrid from Peace Country Toyota for a monthly price of nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents, plus taxes for a thirty-six month term. Staff recommends this option as it can be leased at a lower rate than budgeted and maintains the integrity of the fleet. I, uh, would just like to end there. I don't see the second need for the rest of that motion.
Yeah, no, actually, you're correct there. I was noticing that there. Yeah. Thank you. Seconded by Council Schuman. And were you wanting to speak, councilor?
No.
Oh, okay.
Unless you don't want.
Any questions or comments from council? Thanks for that. Council Malcson?
Um, this is, uh, cheaper than you just charging mileage, isn't it? It's way cheaper.
Yep. Couldn't tell you. I believe it is if you look, uh, history. But yes, you are correct. This is the vehicle that I drive around, uh, for the most part. Uh, what's interesting, I find too, is that the, uh, how the rate has gone down and not up from three years ago.
Through your worship, it'll be about a hundred dollars a month cheaper than, uh, the current vehicle.
But that is, that is council's choice too. I mean, that's, Council Wilber?
Um, just because I have to ask, what, what is the difference between the nine fifty-one, twenty-one and the seven seventy, seventy-three? What, what do we get for that extra?
The issue would be the way it was tendered as well. Um, they put in an extra option or a, a lower grade one that we didn't ask for. Uh, so the other companies that tendered didn't put in an option as well. So that's why staff would have put forward the recommendation, uh, they did. Because otherwise it would, the thought was it might be an unfair advantage if, you know, this is what the criteria we said, so everybody bid and then Toyota put in. But, or you can do this one here. Does that kind of cover that? Jim, there's probably more to it.
Through your worship, the, uh, in answer to the question, the differences are around, um, interior, finish, electronics and suspension. They're, um, like many of these companies, they have a base model and they have, uh, this one is called the limited edition, but they are the next level up package. I am, as you know, concerned that, um, uh, that it was an unsolicited bid for, uh, the base package. And, uh, I don't see one from the competing, uh, competing bids. Uh, because I'm not sure that they saw that as an option that was responsive to the request for the global.
Yeah. So the only option technically would be then to say, to not take this and then put it back out for tender again with different options if we, to be fair.
That would certainly be an option, regardless of council's wishes.
Well, I'm, I mean, like suspension stuff, those are, I just thought, you know, if there's a DVD player or something, well, you don't need it.
But I need it when I'm driving the hint.
Yes, it's everything from, uh, it's everything from the upholstery to the GPS to the suspension.
Okay, no, that answers my question. Thank you.
I don't usually sleep in the backseat and watch DVDs anyway, but yeah.
Save money that way.
Somebody might ask.
Yeah, that's right. Save on hotels. Anyway, uh, any further questions? So all those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Seven, four is report twelve, one, twenty-five from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for the temporary industrial use permit at two zero four one and twenty one oh one Alaska Avenue. Um, this is next to the Peace River Regional District between that and the golf course for people who are wondering where it is.
Okay.
Council Parson?
I'd like to move that, uh, report number twelve dash one, twenty-five from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re temporary industrial use permit at two hundred and forty-one, twenty forty-one and twenty one zero one Alaska Avenue be received. Further, the temporary industrial use permit ten dash zero one be granted, an extension of one year expire in June two thousand and thirteen.
Seconded by Council McFadden. And questions? Jim, I didn't see it in the report and maybe I glazed over it, but what is it zoned right now? Is it, it's commercial and he's asking it to be used for industry, industrial purposes, which is why it needs to have this temporary zoning permit?
Is it commercial or a commercial highway?
Through your worship, it is currently a commercial highway zone.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the reason for temporary industrial use.
So after this, and policy says you only get the three years. So after this extension of one year, if this is passed by council, you can't wait a year and then apply for another three years. It's basically, you have to apply for a rezoning if he still chose, chose to do so? Okay. Okay, just wanted to have that out there for council. Uh, Council Schuman?
Yeah. So, uh, my question, uh, through your worship to staff, did we have any comments? Did anyone, I mean, I know that personally I did get, um, several comments from the general public with regards to how they felt it wasn't really the best use of, of that area, um, as industrial. So did we receive any comments, uh, over the, the years that he, he was there?
Jim?
Uh, as you know, your worship, there's really been only one use under the, uh, original temporary industrial use permit, and that was a pipe yard. Uh, when it set up, we had complaints, uh, several complaints forwarded to bylaw that people were living in the trailers. So we investigated that, determined it wasn't true. There was actually a presence twenty-four hours a day, but it was an office setup. There was no residential use going on. Uh, so that cleared off those complaints. In addition to which, we had complaints, uh, regarding the interactions between the golf course and the, uh, leaseholder. Uh, allegations of golf balls from the driving range hitting vehicles. And those two parties worked through that themselves. That wasn't an issue that the city's regulatory, uh, folks would get involved with. We just, they were originally forward to us in the hope we would intervene, but we wouldn't, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments then? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Seven, five is report twelve, one, twenty-eight. This is from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. And this is for a variance permit, twelve oh five, uh, twelve oh one, one hundred seventeenth Avenue. Sorry, Council Schuman?
I would move that report number twelve dash one, two, eight from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variant, variance. and Sustainable Development regarding the development variant, variance permit number twelve dash zero-five from Richard Sukuyama at twelve oh-one hundred and seventeenth Avenue be received. Further, the council approved issuance of a development variance permit number twelve dash zero-five that allows for the relaxation of the front setback to three point five meters.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Malkinson, and questions, comments? So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. So moved to seven-six, which is report twelve-one-twenty-nine from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, and this is information on the sanitary sewer flushing program. Am I gonna live, Cindy?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. Counsel Parslow.
I'd like to move the recommendation that report number twelve dash one-twenty-nine from the Director of De, Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development re the city of Dawson Creek sanitary sewer flushing program be received. Further, the council direct staff to continue the sanitary sewer flushing program without change.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Kenny, and any questions?
Uh, just a comment, um, that staff will work with, um, the homeowner, and, uh, that's really good. I like that they're gonna go and, and work, work with her to try to figure it out, as well as communicating with her, um, with regards to when we will be doing that work.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Good point to highlight. Thank you. Any other questions from Counsel, then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Seven-seven is report twelve-one-twenty-two, and this is from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the Kinn Arena score clock, uh, request from the Dawson Creek Minor Hockey Association. Counsel Schuman.
Report number twelve dash twenty-two from the Deputy Director of Community Service regarding the Kinn Arena score clock be received. Further, the council decline the request from the Dawson Creek Minor Hockey to amend the Memorial Arena time clock agreement to include the Kinn Arena time clock, and further, that staff be directed to proceed with an advertising RFP encompassing available space at both the Memorial and Kinn Arenas.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Kenny. And, uh, Jim, can you explain to me, so on this RFP idea, 'cause obviously there's, we're starting to hear that there's some ideas there that people, there's a revenue stream to be made by advertising. So how do we see that with the RFP? Because we have, we have a score clock here that I guess the issue would be that the taxpayers paid for this score clock, and somebody else would be garnering the revenues from advertising. So how does that work through an RFP?
Uh, through your worship, the RFP would identify basically, uh, groups or individuals who are interested in marketing that, uh, sales opportunity and remitting, uh, some portion of the proceeds to the city of Dawson Creek, and keeping some themselves for their efforts in selling the space.
Gotcha.
And, uh, so the RFP, rather than a tender, the RFP is to identify both those having the capacity to make the sales and those, uh, uh, offering the greatest return to the city.
Excellent. Okay, so Dawson Creek Minor Hockey, then would, if they so cho, chose to do so, they could come forward on the RFP then and say, "This is our plan, and this is how, and if they're the only ones that come forward, or if three come forward, I guess that's, we'll have to wait and see, right?"
Well, with the RFP, you would not necessarily take, uh, any response. You would have to have one that met the requirements of your RFP.
Okay. Counsel Malkinson.
Um, if, once the RFP comes forward, we're gonna be, uh, deciding the, uh, um, who we're gonna go with, isn't that right? Or do we have policy to do that? Is that gonna be, it's referred to staff, or what?
Staff would gather all the information through the RFP.
It would come back to Counsel.
Okay, all right.
It would have to be ratified through Counsel.
Uh, through your worship, not the RFP, but the responses to the RFP.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions, then? Sorry, Counsel Wilber?
So how does it work now for advertising in the arena? So there is advertising in our arena, so who's going out and getting that, and what is the city getting? Like, is there some sort of portion?
We actually have a full policy in place for that.
Yes, we do, and, uh, it's piecemealed, so, um, junior Canucks have some right to sell some advertising, senior Canucks have some right, minor hockey has the rights to the, uh, Memorial Arena clock, and that is because they actually paid for that clock. Uh, so what we're talking about is the, all the areas that are not encompassed on, under these various other deals that are encompassed in your current policy, so.
Maybe we should review our policies.
I am glad that you'll be doing that, your worship. I'm better a step ahead of you already, my friend.
Yeah.
Might have been a low blow, you know, so the bar's low there.
Take it to your Charlotte, Charlie.
Oh, yeah. Does he have another question?
Well, no, I don't. It's just, I do, I do like this format in the sense that, um, companies and corporations are, seem to be kinder to give to nonprofit groups and support them rather than put money in the city coffers, so, and it benefits our groups in the sense that now they have, they are creating some revenue because they are losing funding in other areas, so I just wanted to clarify what that was, so thank you.
Counsel Malkinson.
They can offset usership fees as well, speaking in concurrence with Shaila.
Excellent. Any other points, then? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Seven-eight is report twelve-one-twenty-three from the Parks Manager. This is the request for quotes to come in for the outdoor litter vacuum. Counsel Parslow.
I move that report number twelve dash one-two-three from the Parks Manager re-request for quotations number twenty-twelve dash zero-eight, outdoor litter vacuum be received. Further, the staff be authorized to purchase one outdoor litter vacuum with options, and Joe Johnson Equipment Incorporated for the price of sixty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars plus taxes.
Thank you. Counsel Wilber is seconding, and questions or comments?
I can't wait to see this thing.
Yeah, it's nicer than the Highlander that we just approved. That sounds like so. But it's also, uh, from what we're hearing from, uh, the departments, can be one heck of a time saver as well.
Lloyd will be able to go up and, uh, clean other areas of town?
He will. That's part of the plan, yes.
He'll have time to do the new sidewalk at the pool for the bus stop now.
Maybe we should revisit that topic.
This is a, uh, this whole Counsel is just low blow. This is excellent. And the, the new roadway by the soccer park and the baseball grounds. Any other, uh, rational comments? Yes, Counsel Malkinson?
Rational question, I think. Um, Lloyd went into detail, um, when I was doing the city cleanup with him about the exact model that he wanted, uh, done. Is this, uh, is this one that he's happy with?
Happy might be another statement.
Through your worship, more or less, uh, more or less, um, this is going to be a significant difference in the way Lloyd does his work right now, because as you know, he's pushing that handcart that we've had, uh, since the early seventies. So there, uh, there are some requirements for, um, the machine that are going to be, you know, their, their baseline requirements regarding how it can travel. In terms of bells and whistles and options, uh, not all the bells and whistles and options that were available have been chosen, and, uh, but I would suggest to you that Lloyd is looking forward to this change in his work environment.
Okay. Him and Stomping Tom will be happy. Any, uh, other comments?
Well, I presume the old cart has been offered to the historical societies?
Yes, they'll have it around Mile Zero, uh, parks. They're cleaning up around Sedan Hall and everything now.
Maybe it could be used there.
Yeah.
Maybe Counsel McFadden can push it at Mile Zero.
Take it on the bus with you next trip. Yeah, okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? Yeah. Is it Monday?
Drugs, your worship, and drugs.
Yeah, so eight-one, we're under bylaws now. Eight-one is report twelve-one-thirty from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration. This is for land sale bylaw forty-one forty-five at 2012, and this is for consideration for first three readings. Counsel Malkinson.
I move that, uh, this report from our Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding the land sale bylaw on sixteen thirty-two hundred and first Avenue, uh, number four-one four-five, 2012 be received, and further that the land sale bylaw sixteen thirty-two hundred and first Avenue, number forty-one forty-five, 2012, be given first three readings.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Kenny. Any questions or comments from Counsel? No, so I'm gonna jump in then, and, uh, I just wanna highlight the fact that this has sat vacant for a little while. One of the reasons why, if you look at it, had the posted sale price was high because we attached to it the charges, the Old Robin's Nest, for those who are unfamiliar with the area, and we had attached to it, uh, the fees for tearing down and cleaning up that site, uh, but this is, just shows that with the economy in our area right now, any piece of vacant land, people are looking at, because especially from the city side of things, uh, we have very little left, uh, in our portfolio. Which leads me to a question, Jim, and that's not pertaining, let's say, to this one, 'cause I don't wanna change policy now, but have we got to the point, and I think this will come out of policy review, that we need to consider the fact that this forty percent, um, payback was an incentive to try to get developers to look at city lots and develop? Do we, I think, I'm just putting this out there, do we still need that? Incentive, because first of all, we have very few city lots left, and...
What was your, you know, from those group that group you met?
Uh, well, I can actually, well, from the group I met yesterday, which were a bunch of developers from Vancouver, uh, they told me that one of the reasons why they liked Dawson Creek is our low taxes, uh, the services we have in the area, and that's why they're, uh, coming up here and looking at all the land, but they did say that, uh, they, they want to see any piece of available land there is in the community, they're willing to start snapping up and building on. So my point is, just for Counsel's consideration, when, maybe when, that's actually a policy, Jim, or is it under a bylaw? It's policy?
Uh, through your worship, it's a policy. It was designed to facilitate development and retailing off, uh, as many of your lots as you possibly could. Uh, I would say objectively it has succeeded.
Very well.
It's becoming almost irrelevant because you have so few lots left. Uh, so, uh, to the extent that it worked, uh, and you had any lots left, you'd probably wish to leave it in place because it worked, but you don't have many lots left.
Okay. Just throwing that out there because I think, uh, you know, the forty percent is almost irrelevant now. People are buying up the lots and...
Well, we could change that through resolution of Counsel, couldn't we not?
Yes, you could.
We could, we could. Um, personally, I'm not, I mean, this, there's an offer come in already on this one, but I'd say going forward, it might be something to consider. That's, that'd be my feeling.
Well, can we put that on our next agenda for discussion?
My, my person, personal feeling was, since we're gonna be going through all the policies anyway, why don't we just wait till then? That'd be my, instead of piecemealing off the policies, you know? I just wanna highlight that. The, the big thing to highlight is just the fact that the economy in the area, people are looking at every availability, uh, to build, which is good, so. So no other comments from Counsel, then? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried? Brings us to mayor's business. First thing I want to do, um, is really highlight and say thank you, uh, to all the volunteers. Keely, the, uh, key people were the oilmen's. As you'll see, the bridge in Kin Park is up. You can, and beautiful, and there's a little bit of landscaping finishing there, but, uh, you know, that wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for the oilmen's working with part of the Legacy Fund from the Energy Conference, and then them putting a lot of volunteer time, and I would presume, uh, some funds, extra funds in as well, uh, to complete that, so I think they deserve a huge thanks, and, you know, it just goes to show, like, a lot of the stuff that happens in this community is because of the volunteers. We were hearing, like, with the powwow earlier, and so, uh, big thanks. Haven't, uh, heard if they're doing anything official, uh, but it is open, and I think they, they've even removed the old bridge and cleaned that whole area up, too, so it's done a great job there. Charlie?
Well, I think, I think that's so great that you've acknowledged them. I just wondered if we shouldn't, uh, consider sending them a letter, but also consider some formal opening. I mean, it's, it's a great stretch of there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, actually, that's a, it's a great idea. I mean, we should send a formal letter to the Oilmen's Association just on behalf of the city, thanking them for that. I think that's a great idea.
I second, I second that.
Second that, okay. And discuss that, though?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with this. There's a lot of people that think that we're responsible for that, you know, the general public, so to have, you know, a big article in the paper and on the TV about how it is actually, you know, the Oilmen's Association that did, did do this, I think would be...
That was a subliminal message, Matthew, just so you know.
It wasn't subliminal.
It was pretty drugged.
So, uh...
I was just trying to make it look like we're not telling them what to do.
I, I think that would be great to have a little event and really, really showcase their...
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll definitely do the thank you. I think, you know, as for an opening, I think we'd wanna kind of coordinate or, or leave that up to them. It's something, you know, one thing with the oilmen, a lot of these groups and rotarians in the community, uh, they're not doing it for a big press release and a big, you know, pat on the back, uh, but, uh, I mean, it's really important, I think, that you highlighted, that people realize this, this wasn't the city, it wasn't taxpayers' money, this was volunteers doing it, so, good point.
They do it to help other people.
Yeah, so we'll send them a letter, so all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. The next item I had then was six-two, was from our delegation this morning around the, uh, the powwow. There was a couple of requests that they came forward with. One was for, uh, consideration for funds, and one was for the use of, um, the parking lot at Lakota Center and at the Memorial Arena. So we have done that in the past. Last year, we didn't contribute funds, so I'm just, that's the background, but it's up to Counsel. Counsel Parslow?
And I would just want, I would just like some guidance from the administration about what is the precedence and what is the policy about these things?
How much money we have?
So Jim?
Uh, through your worship, first, on the camping requests, uh, last year, you allowed camping at the Memorial Arena parking lot, and there were no problems whatever. This year, the request is for the Memorial Arena parking lot, as well as the field to the, uh, east of Lakota Center. We've checked with Lakota Center, there is no competing event that weekend, uh, so both of those requests are non-monetary, but, uh, there's, administration sees no, um, difficulty with them. Uh, the request for the waiver of arena fees would have to come out of your sponsorship account. You have about twenty-six thousand dollars left in that. The powwow folk have already paid for three days at the nonprofit rate at the arena, which is an amount of three thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. So they're, they're asking for a waiver of that, which would have to be by way of a payment through the sponsorship account.
So on that, they're asked for sponsorship, but they didn't, they didn't qualify? They did apply and didn't qualify through the grants policy? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which is why they're coming back saying a sponsorship? Okay, so, sorry, Counsel Malkinson first?
I can't remember what I was gonna ask.
Sure, I'll go to Counsel Kenny until you remember.
I'd like to move that we, um, that, uh, waive the fees, or allow them to use the, uh, the parking lot in Lakota, for, as we did last year, and also that we waive the fee for the Memorial Arena.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Parslow, and discussion? Counsel Schuman?
I'm just trying to scroll down and find. So we waive the fees, but we're, we're gonna call that a...
Sponsorship.
Which sponsor is it?
Well, and that, they've asked for specific, there's different levels of sponsorship.
So what, how much did you say it was for the arena?
Three thousand...
Three something?
Three thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
Oh, I can't get this...
So there's the, the bronze bear was five thousand, and a moose sponsorship was twenty-five hundred. That's what their levels were.
So we would qualify for the moose sponsorship, then, which gets us signage exposure, prominent exposure at the powwow, publication opportunities, um, ads in their event program?
Okay, Counsel Malkinson?
It may be irrelevant now, but they also, yeah, it is irrelevant now, man. Sorry. I'm on fire today.
Okay.
Well, I was, what's the sponsorship level of where we have the mayor engage in the ceremonial grand entry and perform the, the dance like the mayor of Taylor does, which is...
Have you seen me dance, Counsel?
Have you seen the mayor of Taylor dance? That's the way...
You can, like...
You're telling me the bar...
You do a better job.
Okay, I was wondering how hard that, how that bar is there. Counsel Kenny?
Well, I think there's a level of sponsorship, you know, using, using the grounds, like, you know, what we've done already, like, so I thought it was quite reasonable that, you know, waiving the fees and then, um, and then using our facilities.
Yeah, uh, my only thing is, and I have to be blunt here, is we get groups coming forward all the time, asking for this, so if you remember, uh, we had grad class come forward asking us to waive the fees so they could do their dry grad, we said no. Uh, we charged them the full rate. Uh, we had the Kiwanis Club come forward, asking for us to waive the fees for them to put on the trade fair. We said no, and we charged them, I think, the not-for-profit rate, which is why on this one here, staff worked with them and said, "We will charge the not-for-profit rate for this group as well," because that's truly what they were, so. That's why I'm, I'm putting that out there, because Counsel needs to remember that we get these requests all the time, and I'm hoping there'd be some kind of consistency. Counsel Kenny? Counselor Kenny?
I just, I believe that this is such a positive, has such a positive impact on all the Aboriginal people in our community. I think that it brings more, I think it's an important thing that the city of Dawson Creek support this and support what, what these people are doing. I'm just thrilled that all this positive energy is, is, is there as an example for all the Aboriginal children and families in this community, and I just can't see as, I think this is a different thing that we're looking at, and I think it's really important that we support this.
Yeah, oh, and I, Jim, sorry, you want to...
Yeah, through your worship, you did actually this year grant a fee waiver to the Kiwanis.
Yes.
On their request. They came forward and asked for that, stating that they would otherwise have to raise the admission fee, and you did grant, I think, half of the...
Half of it back, yes.
The rental, I'm just, we're just trying to call up how much that was.
It was about seventy-five hundred dollars, because we were charging them the full thirteen thousand to rent it, and we gave them half of it back. So, they still paid seventy-five hundred.
In, in the past, you have looked at each request as it comes to you.
Yeah. Definitely, and, I mean, I agree, this is great for the community, definitely. Got to look at that aspect too, so, Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I really appreciated their, their presentation, and I had no idea that they had a, a dance club going on down at the Trombley School that was engaging that many young, young Aboriginal children in our, in our community, and I think that's, that alone, you know, is just amazing, and, and that's why I would be supporting, supporting this.
Yeah, Counselor Parslow?
Just, I, I think Counselor Kenny made a point, maybe you're wrong, I guess someone else made a point, maybe you didn't. But maybe the value of the sponsorship, if you total the arena and the camping, is possibly we might, I think it might be at the five thousand level, if you package it together, and then, I think, being involved in the grand entry is kind of important, and you would be eligible for that, under your leadership, and...
Well, I think what's really important is just...
You're really fortunate with that.
He does, he wants to come laugh, huh? No, but what, I think to your point, what's, should be stressed is to continue building that relationship, right, and be involved, so... I guess we'd have to look at that, right now, the motion is to waive the fees, which was three thousand and change, and almost four thousand, okay, and the bronze bear sponsorship is five thousand, I don't think we've ever typically charged for any of the parking, so I'm not sure how staff would figure that, it's an in-kind, I guess.
It's an, it's, yes, I think it's an in-kind, and that's what I'm just suggesting, if you package the whole lot together, often in sponsorships, there's cash, but there's also in-kind, and I think it's an in-kind thing, and the grand entry is, grand entrance is a very important part of powwows. And I, I would like the city to be part of that grand entrance, and I'm just suggesting that the cash value plus the in-kind is worth, and I think the city can, under the guidance of administration, put, ascribe value to that part, I mean...
Yeah, okay, so right now, the motion is then for that, but it's easy to say that combination of that and the in-kind should qualify for a bronze bear sponsorship, in our opinion. Jim, does that sound reasonable?
I'm certain that we can reach an accommodation.
I kind of thought so. Okay, so, if that works. Okay, any other discussion on that then?
We've already, they've already paid the arena fees, so we're just gonna be giving it back to them, that's right?
Yes, that's what it sounds like, yes.
All right.
Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed, and it's carried? I'll get my dancing shoes on.
And somebody's gonna take pictures, because I'm not here today.
That's all I had under mayor's business, aside from, I just want to thank Counselor Schuman and Malkinson as well for the FCM. I think that was very educational again, and it was a good time, it's great going, getting out and meeting our colleagues from across the country and and discussing what works and what doesn't work in other communities, and, you know, the, the sessions during the day are informative, but, you know, you learn so much more, I find, just sitting down and having coffee with other counselors and just, and finding out what works with them, yes, coffee, I said, yes. Yeah. Is there something else you want me to highlight?
Further to the powwow, one of the things that city will, they asked to carry its city flag, and I suggest Counselor McFadyen lead you in carrying the city flag, I think it would, he would add a lot of dignity to the event.
You're on fire today, Counselor. That will work, that one out. Hey, we even got seconders, right? So, let's move to the diary, Jim, before this gets out of control.
Okay, I'll just kick that over to Greg, you're right.
I just hope council remembers that I'm actually a staff person and not a member of council.
We know you are.
Please be nice.
Beautiful ties you should wear to the event.
Last meeting, when I wasn't here, Counselor Schuman had a question regarding our diversion rate for construction waste. So, just a little background on that, as, as council's aware, we're, we are shooting for a lead gold certification for the Calvin Crook Centre. And as part of that, all our claims have to be audited and verified by independent firms, so the contractors, PBI, have hired a firm out of Vancouver called Lighthouse to verify the numbers that are going on our lead application. And what they, what Lighthouse has told us is that we've achieved a ninety-two point three percent waste diversion rate on the project, which is more than, than is required to get our lead point, but the more, the better. During my report, the weather is going to be a recurrent theme, weather did us no favors whatsoever. Water infiltration into the basement continues apace, every time we patch a leak, we get another leak showing up. As I've reported out to you before, the only permanent solution is to dig down around the outside and actually waterproof it and install weeping tile, but we don't have enough money to do that. So, in the meantime, we are working with the consultants, coming up with a strategy to make sure we can safeguard what we actually put in the basement until such time as we can get the weeping tile done, hopefully, next year.
That's what I was just gonna say, I mean, this obviously is something that we are going to have to consider, I mean, this is, you can only put so many Band-Aids on a cut. So, let's, there, we're obviously gonna have to talk with the engineers and construction group, that's the best fix. I guess it's no different than anybody's house, I mean, you eventually have to pony up to do the weeping tile, right?
We have to remember, it's an old, it's an old, old building, and I'm beginning to think that the kind of weather events we've experienced the last two years are going to be the new normal, and we had better take that into account. We actually are doing work, though, so upstairs, it's, it has been drywall, taping's in progress. Painting will begin later on this week. They'll be moving downstairs to the main floor to also do drywall this week. The stage floor has been poured, it'll be a sprung floor over top of a two-inch concrete, so that's been poured, and all the electrical and mechanical to the multipurpose hall is complete, and holy cow! It looks like the set of a science fiction movie, there is so much stuff there.
Yeah.
In the basement, we've done all of the framing, and we've insulated all the exterior walls, and fireproofing is complete, mechanical, electrical, can get back in there and finish all their rough-ins that we can start working on, on doing the interior finishes downstairs. We don't have a May bill yet from PBI, but we're estimating that we're in that sixty percent complete neighborhood, which means they're really gonna have to ramp up, if they're gonna make, be finished by the end of August, but they keep reassuring us that will happen.
Sorry, it was August fourth was the actual original date, is it now the end of August?
Now it's the end of August, yeah. With the reclaimed water plant, we're just about done with that. We have been delivering very high-quality water at great volumes to Shell for about a month. The SAGR cells are producing as much water as we can physically pump, which is good, and it is so darn clean, that the ten micron filter is almost not being used, but...
That's pretty cool, actually.
All the work that we've got left to do is outside work. We've got landscaping and finishing the exterior of the building, and we've had to re-excavate the water line that Shell put in, because they did it in the middle of winter, we've had to re-excavate that and re-compact it. And of course, the weather was a huge help in that, so we basically lost a week there. And we have to do that, because we're doing concrete work, and we're doing paving over top of that, and we want it to not settle. And so, the anticipated date for final completion, everybody out of there, is July thirteenth. Shell has a film crew coming in this week to do a small film about the project, and they'll be interviewing the mayor and, and walking through for their anticipated international launch of the building, when we do a grand opening sometime in September.
Thanks, yeah, and they're going to be bringing in basically as many Shell bigwigs as they can, because as I mentioned to you before, when I was down in Houston at the Energy Conference, CEO for Shell highlighted this project in Dawson Creek as one of their world's top stories for the year for Shell. So, they're pretty, pretty excited about this, so... Counselor Parslow, I think you had a question actually on the art center?
Yeah, I do, I'd like to go back to the, I call it the bad news, but just to go to the good news, I've had a number of people ask if, actually, two.
That's a, that two's a number.
Yes, there may be more, but they wondered if there's gonna be some tours arranged of the, because they're very interested in the, in, I guess, the engineering and mechanics, how it works, it's very posit, they're very positive people, they just wonder if there's gonna be any tours.
You're referring to the reclaimed?
Shell, yeah, the Shell thing, yes.
That's a good point, because I think we'd want to be a part of that too.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
Hadn't thought of it, but yes, we could always do it.
Okay, well, they say, it's certainly, as a member of council and others, I obviously would like it, but it's also, these are general public people who would like it, so I just throw that out. Going back to the bad news, is there cost estimate ballpark for the drain tile for the old post office building?
We, we haven't, we haven't even got as far as kind of an engineering Class D estimate. What we have is from people who have done this kind of work, are looking at that and saying, "You are looking in the neighborhood of three-quarters of a million dollars for that work." Which is why it was originally deleted from the overall cost, was because of the, the, the price of it in the first place. As I say, we have a, we have a strategy in place to have that looked at and come up with a firmer price, but I doubt if it'll be cheaper.
And the longer we wait, it just keeps going up, so, Counselor Wilbur?
Along the lines with that, obviously, there was a water issue there before, I mean, I'm gonna say, I've got to be safe in saying that, and I just do not understand why we would be putting any money into doing anything in the basement till the water issue is fixed. I mean, why would you drywall your house or do all that finishing if your roof leaked? The basement leaks, and so why would we be drywalling, framing, putting in electrical, doing all this stuff if there's an issue? And, and along that lines, I guess, then I, I put it back out there to the community and the groups, how much have the groups continued to fundraise for this project? Originally, they said they would raise the money to pay for it. There's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus here we need to finish that basement, so I'm just putting that out there. And then, on the reclaimed water plant, if we had to redo the line that Shell put in, is Shell paying for that, or did we pay for that?
Greg?
Through your worship, yes, Shell is paying the whole shot.
They're paying everything.
Just want for clarification.
Shell has paid more than they've committed to paying, actually.
Good on Shell, thank you, Shell.
Let's, let's just, to make it simple, we have not gone over really what we said we would commit, so everything from the original discussions that, anything that went over, Shell has picked up the bills for.
Well, good, our community will be happy to hear that.
Sorry, Counselor Parslow?
Well, it's the same lines as Counselor Wilbur, that the, I was just concerned, this water issue was, I, I mean, you read the, the original studies that were done, it was all there, but I just wondering, does this mean that the archives will not be moved until that water situation is dealt with?
Through your worship, actually, I don't have an answer to that. And that's because I'm not in a position to make an answer, we have a design review committee, and yes, we do have to get together and talk about this, and decide how we're gonna go forward. I've got the, the architects coming up next week, and by then, we hope to have a plan for exactly how we're gonna do this, and certainly, one of the options will be that the archives doesn't move in for, until that work is done. Certainly, one of the options we'll have to look at.
Now, is it my understanding too, I mean, if you look at the smears on the window, that's my face looking in all the time, trying to see what's going on. When you're, when you're down in the basement where the archives are gonna go, that's a good portion of where the leaking is occurring, is it, am I correct with that still?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the locations, and... Counselor Wilbur's correct, is that we knew that we had leaks when we started off, and we did a bunch of work to patch those leaks, and we did do some weeping tile work to take the water away. And that has worked. The whole problem is that it's like that building is underwater, every time we patch one hole, another one springs a leak, so right now, what we're doing, in the meantime, is I've told them, "Stop patching holes," because at least now, we know where the water's coming. If we, if we keep patching that, it might come up someplace else where we've already done work, and we don't want to be in that position.
Yeah. Okay, good, any other, oh, Counselor Malkinson?
I'm sorry, I'm sure council might know a lot of this already, so the company that we hired to do the original assessments on the, you know, the, I don't know, practicability of buying the, the centre for a conversion to an art centre, they all identified, you know, the problems, you know, in the basement and everything like that, and we, for budgetary reasons, decided not to go through, well, go through with fixing the foundations and things like that? Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, well, and...
So, it's, it's our, it's our problem, you know, it's not their problem for not identifying it, eh?
No, it was identified that there was water in there, and there was a plan put in place that, in order to stop the leaks, this is what you have to do, that's what we did, and we stopped the leaks. To Greg's point is, you know, it's like the finger in the dyke, I guess, situation, that we did stop the leaks that were identified through the original assessment, and now it's popped up somewhere else. So, and probably where you're going, no, we can't go after, let's say, the contractor or anybody else to say...
I wasn't saying anything.
No, but I think, you're thinking, Counselor Schuman?
So, I think that the original, like, originally, Greg, the ramp down into the basement was suspected as being one of the main sort of areas where the leaking was, was happening, wasn't it? I think I recall something about that ramp, and, and I think that maybe, just to dunk in, Counselor Malkinson, that, you know, I think that there was, it was identified, but then there was fixes identified also, and it's just not, not fixed at all, I guess.
This is frustrating.
Yeah, I just see it as, instead of spending that money on drywalling and, and finishing that basement, use that money to put, to fix the water issue, and then, maybe our groups can come forward, or however, and then we worry about the funds to finish that basement, I just don't see putting that money and work into something if we know this is a serious issue, our archives are going there.
That's right.
I, I just see taking that money that we would be spending on finishing and, and roughing in stuff and spending it on dealing with the water issue.
And I agree, and I think that's why we just heard that we're probably not finishing that area where the archives are going until we figure out what's going on, I mean, we know where the leaks are right now, so to, to Greg's point, we're just not, we're not gonna make matters worse, right, we're gonna leave it in those areas while it's identified, while we have a plan in place, so...
I'm just hoping that that's, that those are the only ones, and we don't further down the road find out somewhere else in the basement there's other water leaks, I'm just thinking, put in the drain tile, deal with the issue, and then finish that basement.
Counselor Parslow?
So, that's where, assuming that that's where we're at, is that as relates to archives, and we're not doing any further work down there until we resolve the water issue, is that correct?
Well, we, we'll continue to do work that's not on the outside walls, is the short answer for that, yes. The, if there is good news, right now, it's that the areas that where we're getting water are areas like in the archive area, and mechanical rooms, places where we didn't have a lot of good finishing. we didn't have a lot of good finishing, um, scheduled already, um, and so, there's, you know, there's a good chance that if we don't finish them, we can still use the area, uh, like the mechanical room, the archives, of course, are a different, uh, a different thing entirely, um, but what we need to balance is the, uh, to hopefully have the ability to have the K-PAC programs, uh, still running in some form, uh, while we're doing the fine, the final job then.
So the, my last point, my last point, then, do we, does council need to, um, authorize administration to get a, a full bore engineer's certified, uh, proposal as to how we fix this thing and, uh, cost estimate, or is this something that's already part within your mandate? I just...
Kind of is, but Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, this is the responsibility of the architects and their consultant engineers, and their job is to take it to the review committee, the design review committee. Uh, Greg has arranged the time for them to do that, we don't know what they're going to propose, but they'll propose it first to the design review committee, who will then bring a report to council, basically, that's what we're having.
Yeah, so it's, there's a process in place, I guess, to make sure it's not left, okay? Any other questions, then, on the, uh, the diary? That's the most questions you've had in a while, Greg, good job.
Good, good.
Now, so move on to, uh, the consent calendar. Move. Councillor Malkinson, sent by councillor Schuman. Strategic priorities under, oh, sorry, first, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried, strategic priorities, uh, you'll notice that, uh, there's a item there, and twelve-one, for some recommendations to cross a few things off. But Jim, is there anything to highlight before we do that?
Uh, through your worship, you see my report on suggested changes, and of course, you have authorized an additional change today regarding the policy review, so, but you don't have to sec, authorize it the second time?
Yeah.
Uh, but if you will, uh, authorize the ones I am suggesting, the chart will change at the next meeting.
Okay, so we have, uh, recommendations there under, uh, twelve-one. So, so councillor McFadden, seconded by councillor Malkinson. Any comments, then, on those, other than just say, "Good job," and "Thanks for getting things checked off," a list? Councillor Parslow, sorry, were you voting or had a question?
I was just looking at the, uh, corporate priorities, and, and maybe I'm missing something here, so do apologize if I am, but, uh, the long-term financial plan, the terms of reference, I, we haven't seen that yet, I wonder where that is, uh...
I know Shelley did say she was trying to finish her budget.
Through your worship, uh, Shelley had it ninety-five percent complete before she left on holidays, but it'll be on your next agenda?
Excellent.
Okay.
And we do allow her vacation once a year for three days.
Absolutely, yes.
That's how busy she is. Uh, any other questions, then, on that? Okay. Well, did we vote, sorry?
No.
I don't think we did, so all those in favor? Okay, opposed? No one? It's carried? Uh, nobody signed up, I assume, for the question-answer period?
No one.
Uh, committee of the whole, not this one, any media questions at this time in the meeting? Um, go ahead, Matt.
I just got one, uh, question for Greg, I just wanna get the, uh, question data for the, uh, reclaimed water plant, and, and, does that, is the, is it a truck or a...
Uh, yes, that does.
Okay. You okay for now, then? Good. Um, you'll notice, then, too, also, we had six-three, we didn't have a chance to go back to that because nobody came in, so I'm not, we'll just, uh, that'll be stricken from the agenda, and then, so a motion to recess to the close, councillor Schuman, councillor Kenny, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried, and we'll take five minutes or so before we go into that. So we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Uh, we are moving up to delegations. Uh, first delegation we have is six-one, we have Mr. Bob Hogan in attendance, I have a proclamation I'm gonna read out, but then we're gonna be inviting Bob to come forward, uh, as part of an announcement that we're making. So I'll just read out the proclamation first. So whereas throughout history, people worldwide have celebrated the summer solstice and recognized the power and energy of the sun, and its importance to all life on the planet, and whereas on June twenty-third, the city of Dawson Creek will be announced as the first official solar city in Canada by the Canadian Solar Cities Project, a newly formed Canadian not-for-profit corporation dedicated to promoting solar technologies and sustainable communities throughout Canada, so now therefore I do hereby proclaim June twenty-third as solar day in Dawson Creek, and we encourage all residents in and around the surrounding community to celebrate the benefits of solar energy here in Dawson. So, thank you very much, Bob, come forward. I'm just gonna close that.
Yeah, well, thank you, um, through your worship, Mayor Brinkman, so, my name is Bob Hogan, I'm with the Northern High College Clean Energy Division, and we have been delivering the solar days project, celebrating solar day in Dawson Creek for the last several years, and we've always done it in conjunction with the city of Dawson Creek, Northern High College, and our corporate sponsors who have been in the past, Afghanistan Industries, and A.D. Horstmann, and some, and this year, solar day, of course, is on the twenty-third of June, and the energy host in, at Northern High College, and we are, uh, having a, a